All righty. Welcome to the Community Preservation Meeting, held at One City Council Hearing Room, One Government Center Fall River. It's Monday, the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at six thirty. Pursuant to the open meeting laws, any person who make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Communities are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and deemed acknowledged and permissible. We'll start with roll call to my left.
Michael Ferris.
Alexandra Silva.
Kristen Cantara Olivera.
John Brandt.
James Hornsby.
Rick Mancini.
Okay, no citizen input? Oh, well, we're missing tonight the Park Board, City Council appointee, and Joanne Bentley is on vacation. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes from June seventeenth?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June seventeenth.
And I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote?
I don't believe I was here for that meeting.
No.
Same thing. Same thing, please.
Alex Silva, yes?
Kristen Cantara Olivera, yes.
John Brandt, yes? People who were here, you have to stand.
And Rick Mancini, yes.
I wasn't, I wasn't here technically, but I read over the meeting and I watched it.
Yeah. Okay, next is a request for extensions. First request is Fall River Art Association. Hello?
Hi, everybody. Hi, my name is Dana Barnes. I am the past president of the Greater Fall River Art Association. Presently, I am the Director of Finance of the same organization. I'm here to request an extension of the first grant that we got for our porch. We have struggled to get a contractor. We thought we had one, and we did a little bit of a deep dive into the credentialing of him, and we found out that he is not fully licensed to do the job. We have two bids out to, or two requests for information out to two different people, and we are still waiting to hear back from them. It's, I'll be honest, it's a challenge trying to get a contractor that can, that can do that job, because it needs to have that structural component to their license. But we are pretty confident that we're going to be able to do this. We have started this grant. We have the, the granite is done, and it looks phenomenal. The lead line has been replaced, and that's another absolute plus. We also have had Civitac do a little bit of a combination of drawings of the porch, because we are having a lift put on the porch. So what we were trying to do, rather than have the porch be all done, and then have to come in and dig, and refurbish part of that porch to get the lift on and all that, there is some combined drawings that we just got, to be able to make a more cohesive front entrance, rather than trying to do piecemeal and stuff like that, so. But I am absolutely confident that we can get this done. We need our, we need our porch. So I don't, I would appreciate some extra time. It's just been, like I said, it's just been a challenge trying to get a contractor to be able to do it. But we are working diligently on doing that.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just have, I'm just curious, where is the lift gonna go?
The lift is off on the, if you look at the front porch, it's gonna be off on the left-hand side, behind like the Rosa Sharon that's there. It's in that section over there. And I'm, and I'll be honest, I'm a little bit glad that it's not happening right now, because the house right next to us, he's doing, he's dropping in some electrical, and he's, the whole side is all dug up. I can't imagine two of us trying to dig on the same side to do this. Could present a challenge, for lack of a better word. But yeah, the lift is gonna go on the other side, and then they're gonna work the back staircase and things like that, because that really needs a little tender loving care as well, so.
Just one quick question. I would assume that this is going to make ADA compliant by having a-
Yes, it is. Yes, the first floor will be fully ADA compliant, and the, we will have a, inside there is a bathroom that will be ADA compliant. And then there is also what we use presently as a first-floor classroom that will become an ADA-compliant studio for an artist should they, they need that. And we'll just move the classroom out into the, to the main foyer, somewhere.
All right, so can I have a motion to grant a two-year extension?
I'll make a motion that we extend a two-year extension to the artist's ocean.
Thank you.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much.
All right.
Next, we have the Antioch School.
Oh.
Hi, how are you? My name is Diane Correa. I'm the Vice Principal at the Antioch School. We're asking for an extension. Unfortunately, we were supposed to be done by now, June. The shingles haven't, they were backwatered. The shingles didn't come in on time. So the architect, or the construction contractor, he's ready to go. It's just a matter of the shingles coming in, and we're waiting on our permit. So the shingles are in. As of August eighth, they're ready to be dropped off at the school. Now we're just waiting on the building permit, and hopefully get going, and get this processed. So it'll be the four sides shingling, and then part two will be the second grant that we just did for two thousand twenty-five.
So, any questions from the board?
Just a quick question. What timeframe do you think they'll be starting and finishing? I know it's a hard one to say.
We wanted, we wanted it to be done before school started in September. So he's working on, like, drop-off and pickup time, where he'll kind of use that time to kind of go to the side of the building, and like, start tearing down that while, you know, we're dropping off kids and that type of thing. But we're hopefully, he's saying, like, mid-October.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, so.
To be finished, I mean?
With the siding.
Oh.
Yeah, with the siding. And then we have Mason that will be working on the chimney. He hasn't given us a date yet.
So you're not gonna-
And the previous shingles, how long were they on?
I've, I've been at the school since nineteen ninety-nine, and it's never been touched.
Yeah, okay, so they were re, they weren't done by Philip Brayton, okay.
Not, it's been a while. It's been a while. We've had the roof and the windows done since I've been there.
Thank you.
So you're, it sounds like you're not gonna progress with the project, like, wait until any breaks for it? You're just gonna go once you get the shingles and it sounds?
Yep, go right on through, right on through. I don't want to post monies anymore. We just, you know, it's with every storm that we've had, we've have shingles coming off. We have the wood starting to rot in the front. We just, we just want it done, so.
So can I have a motion for a two-year extension?
I'll make a motion for a two-year extension for Antioch School.
I'll second it.
Okay, all favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, no nays, okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Next, we have the Barnum &amp; Bloom Workshop. I don't think Mike LaBosse made it, but I don't see a problem with giving this one a two-year extension.
Could you just read the reasoning for the public?
Sure. The reason of the delay is in part by need to prioritize architectural work at the Anarondak Farm, BioReserve Discovery Center. As you know, the department closed on that purchase in June twenty-third and hired an architectural team, T-two out of New Bedford, completed this summer. Much of the acquisition delicately, the Copacabana Water Land Reserve Acquisition is complete. This includes land surveying, appraisal development, twenty-one E hazardous materials assessment. However, the wetland restoration plan must be completed and approved by Conservation Commission before the parcel can be restored. This process has meant unexpected delays. So that's the reason why. So could I have a motion for two-year extension?
Is there a reason why they're not, these parties are not showing up to make a presentation?
Mike LaBosse is normally here, so there must have been something that came up.
And I see, I see three others also, the Four of Fire Museum, Central Fire, Father Kelly's-
That's Al, and he's at the new meeting at Diamond.
So should we table these until next meeting?
I don't see a problem with, I mean, what questions do you have that, I mean, they just got done with the surveying, all that, the plans, and it has been in front of Conservation, and we haven't signed off on it yet, so it's not-
Delay may well come from the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
They have to be very careful.
Yeah, there's a couple things I gotta-
Do you expect the Conservation Commission to come through fairly soon?
Oh, yeah, that's, he's working on the things that were, we asked him to, so.
Well.
That should be no problem.
I mean, at least for these, I, I'm not sure about the other ones, but at least for these two projects, they gave valid reasons, so we know why.
And the Fire Museum, I understand, that's been going on for quite a while.
That's-
And the Central Fire.
Well, let's just do, let's stick to these two first.
So can I have a motion to grant two-year extension?
So I do have a question for this one, but I wouldn't necessarily hold it up for it. Do we know, so for Barnum &amp; Bloom Workshop, do we know if they hired the same architectural firm for all those projects?
Could you speak into the mic? I'm having trouble understanding you.
Yes. Is that better?
Yeah.
So I was just wondering, and we might not have the answer, for Barnum &amp; Bloom Workshop, if they, if we know they hired the same architecture firm for all three of those projects, and that's the reason for the delay? It's just the need to prioritize the work at, at Anarondak and BioReserve. It doesn't say, like, you would assume that it's the same firm, but-
It says T-two, yeah, it doesn't say if they're doing everything.
Because if it's not the same firm, that's not a reason, really, right?
Well, their plan is to get the Barnum &amp; Bloom Workshop back on track as soon as possible.
I guess it depends on why they had to prioritize it.
Yeah, that would be my question, you know? But, like I said, I wouldn't necessarily hold it up for this, because the water department is generally very good at following through on their grants.
Yeah, Mike is normally right on the ball.
Yeah, maybe a question into Mike about the firms for the three projects, just for clarification. But like I said, we can vote on it if the committee agrees.
All right. So can I have a motion to grant a two-year extension?
I, I actually have to abstain from this, because we were part of the team of T-two architects. Once we took this position on this board, we stepped away from that, but I don't think it would be fair for me to vote on that.
Okay.
Recluse yourself.
Yeah. I would like to recluse myself.
Okay.
To leave. You actually have to leave, you have to recluse yourself. Okay, sorry, thank you.
I'd make the motion to grant the extension for Barnum &amp; Bloom and Copacabana Water Shed Landing Acquisition, maybe with the caveat that we get that information regarding the architecture firm for Barnum &amp; Bloom.
Okay, second. Roll call vote?
Jim Hornsby. Alex Silva, yes?
Kristen Cantara Olivera, yes.
John, yes?
Yes.
Rick Mancini, yes.
All righty. Next, we have the Fall River Museum.
Yeah, we did.
We did that with the-
We did both.
Yeah.
I mean, it was on the same.
It was on the same page.
Same thing.
I guess we'll take the three, the Fall River Museum, Central Fire Station, and Father Kelly's Park.
We'll do those separate.
Do them separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here you are, Sandy.
Um, she-
I just wanna take the Fire Museum and Central at the same, because they're the one bond, they're the combined bond.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
So I would take that as one.
Okay, so we'll take the Fires, Museum and the Central Fire Station together. Al Olivera couldn't be here. He's at the Diamond School for the planning of the new school, so I guess I came for this here. Does the board have any questions? I know the Central Fire Station is one of my projects I always look into. They have a problem with the shingles, so they're looking at something a little more cost-effective.
Fire Museum?
The Fire Museum.
Not Central, yeah, you said Central Fire Station.
Yeah, I mean, the shingles for the roof.
The roof, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they had a bid committed, nine hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand. They weren't expecting to be that high, so they went back to the drawing board.
Was that for the-
I apologize. I have to recluse myself again, because I've done pro bono work for the city of Fall River Fire Museum, and I just want to be part of this, so I will leave the room.
Okay.
So was that for the composite ones that we had looked at?
Okay.
So they're looking to get something else.
Okay.
And I was a little behind too, because they did not get payment for their architect for almost a year.
Yeah.
I must say, so count that in when you're thinking of it. So can I have a motion, or do you have any questions on those two projects?
No, I don't, I don't. I'll make a motion that we accept an extension on the Fire, Fire Museum and Central Fire Station.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call?
Alex Silva, yes?
Kristen Cantara Olivera, yes.
John Brandt, yes?
Yes, James Hornsby.
Rick Mancini, yes. Then we have Father Kelly Park. They're asking for, it's in the construction phase.
What does that mean? Like what? They're actually putting them up?
I know they had bids come in for the lights.
Okay.
Not sure how much the bids were, but they did have the bids come in.
So is it in construction phase as it says, or is it in bidding?
It said, no, the bids are in, so.
Doesn't look like it. I went over there.
Well, I guess now they're in the construction phase. They're getting ready to start it.
So they've chosen a, they've chosen a front, okay. That makes more sense then.
Can I get a motion for a two-year extension on that?
Sure. Move, move it. Move, move approval.
Second, sure.
Roll call.
Michael Ferris, yes?
Alex Silva, yes?
Kristen Cantara Olivera, yes.
John Brandt, yes?
James Hornsby.
Rick Mancini, yes.
Okay. Next, we have something different. Out-of-cycle funding, I thought we might look into. CPA does allow us to have other funding periods besides our annual funding. So it does fall within the guidelines of CPA. And the reason I thought about this one was, we have a project that's coming up, it's gonna be affordable housing, which is a, is a major thing in Fall River with affordable housing. So if we, the reason for taking it out of cycle, we'll get the funding and the purchase of the house done quicker, and they could start working on it. So this time next summer, somebody could be living in new affordable housing. Does anybody have any questions, comments, when he's? Troy, Alex?
So just generally regarding out-of-cycle funding, I think we should be very careful with kind of how we proceed with this, because as, if we say that the CPA does allow for out-of-cycle funding, we have to kind of have it coincide with the information, the process, and the schedule that we have had available to the public, that they are currently, you know, in the process of going through. So I don't think this would be something we could change necessarily this cycle, nor do I think it would be right to change something this cycle, especially since we're literally about to open up eligibility funding applications, and every other applicant has been waiting for the schedule that we've advertised and posted, and that's posted on our website under the city plan. So currently, our Fall River Community Preservation Committee does have a mechanism for out-of-funding cycle, out-of-cycle funding. Some of you may be aware of it, because I think some of you have dealt with it. It's an emergency application. Essentially, it kind of helps an emergency situation applicant jump the line to, you know, settle a problem that is deemed an emergency. However, the gray area is that that emergency is, you know, at the will and discretion of the committee. I can remember previously, one of the most recent emergency applications that the committee received was from the public library when the roof was leaking. You know, I remember that was contentious, not just among the committee, but among the public, over what, if that constituted as an emergency, because it was essentially deferred maintenance at the responsibility of the city over the years. Then when it reached the point of no return, you know, you say it's an emergency, but it's an emergency of your own making sort of thing. So I, I don't necessarily see anything wrong with the process that currently stands. But I, if, if the committee would be open to having multiple funding periods throughout the year, like, I know some communities award grants two times a year, rather than just one time a year. That's something we can codify and make, you know, aware, at least for a full year, or the full year before the funding applications actually open. Because if we were to, you know, take an out-of-cycle funding application this year at this moment, two weeks before eligibility applications are due, I think it's, wouldn't be right, I would say, to the other applicants or the public.
I just want to second, I've got notes on the same situation, and the out-of-cycle, I would be real concerned at this point, the way our program is set up, and we have a system that's worked very well. But being out-of-cycle, we would have to, we'd probably open some sort of Pandora's Box, because anybody would come in, that any of our citizens could come in with a proposal and say, oh, I'm out of cycle, but I need to get this done right away. So I, I really have, these projects are great, but I'm really concerned with out-of-cycle. And, and I agree with, with Alex that if we want to put that and influence that into our, our system, then we could vote on that and get it into next year's cycle.
Well, the thing is, you're talking, we have the, the money for NCPA housing right now. We always have a hard time spending our housing money, so that's why.
Excuse me, John, excuse me, John.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were in-
No, no, I, I just heard tonight that there's two hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. So that's all we would have to expend. That's our housing budget.
Yeah, that, they're not counting, that's what we've incurred over the years, yeah. That's in our balance, yes.
That's now. We will not have the additional money until June or July of twenty-five. So there's only two hundred and forty-nine thousand in there.
Yeah.
Okay, but I, my concern is that we're opening up a Pandora's Box here, where anybody could now ask to have an out-of-cycle request, and if it's not in our system, what do we do? Do we deny it? Or do we allow just anybody to do that?
I guess anybody could ask for an out-of-cycle funding, but if it's not, the funds aren't there, that's a different story. I mean, here the funds are there. I mean, that's-
But they're not entirely there. The funds are less, what we have is actually less than what they're asking for.
Yeah.
And so currently, the way it's done out-of-cycle is an emergency application, so I don't, I'm not aware of these being emergency applications or not, but that is the mechanism that is, you know, available to the public right now. And I would argue that just because community housing money is available, doesn't mean it's, you know, burning a pocket, a hole through our pocket. It's actually earning us interest. And, you know, some may argue that, you know, you could save it for a higher-impact project, or a larger project, something that would, you know, constitute a significant impact for the community. So that's at the discretion of the committee. It's not really an operating, you know, memorandum to just spend any money that we have. I don't, I don't agree with that.
I'm torn. I really appreciate, as a, as a new person on the committee, I really appreciate the importance of doing things fairly in terms of applications and following the schedule. At the same time, I'm well aware that we have an enormous housing crisis, and it's probably more severe in the area of people who used to pay six, seven hundred dollars, and now are hit with, well, my parishioner is hit with twelve hundred. And that, that is precisely the amount of money that she gets.
Yeah.
In cash. Okay. Now, she's saved by public housing. But a lot of people, working people, are not saved by public housing, because there's a long list, and besides, they're not eligible. And I'd like to look at this, look at it a little more. If this were, if this were something to improve St. Luke's Church, I'd say, do it, let's wait on it, okay? But now, I see Mr. Dionne here. Is he here for the, the meeting?
Yeah.
Maybe he could, see, I want to find out if we, I want to find out if we, if we don't do it tonight, when, how much does this hold it up? I also know that the September first deadline will tell us if they're going to, maybe it will, it will tell us who is not applying. It won't tell us who is, who will make a final application.
Yeah.
But it will tell, but it will tell us, for example, that a large housing, nonprofit housing corporation will not apply, because they don't submit an eligibility thing. So I can't, I would just wonder, I don't understand what will happen if we hold it up. That's what I don't know.
The one thing also about this is the house is going on the market for sale, so it's like buying open space. You can't always put it in.
Can we keep it to the general agenda item?
That's, that's part of the problem.
No, well, we're just doing out-of-cycle funding, we're not doing the specific.
Okay, that, well, I'm just trying to explain why I wanted to be-
I thought the city took it by eminent domain.
No.
For taxes.
That's what it says in the application.
We're talking about the, yeah. We're talking about the out-of-cycle, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say, I could, normally I'd support an out-of-cycle thing, but I don't want to kill the project.
Okay, well, we won't kill, be killing the project. Okay, how about we vote on, is there a motion?
I, I would motion not to do an out-of-cycles funding source until after this application process, and we, we table it until next year. If you're going to do that, you know, you have a cycle where if there's an emergency, you have that avenue, but this particular case, I would say, let's just, let's forego it for now, and then put it on the docket for the, after the applications for next year.
And I'll second that motion.
Can I also add, just before we vote, that we would, we would also be proactive, I think, in not waiting till the end of the cycle. Like, there's nothing stopping us from amending our plan currently if we did want to discuss, you know, two award periods per year, or changing the emergency application, you know, maybe making it, like, not an emergency, I guess. But I think that's risky, as Rick was saying.
But under the rules we have, it would, there is no emergency application here, so that the applicant could, if we voted to table, I don't, applicant could apply on an emergency basis next month, yes?
Yes, if, if we don't hear it tonight, we'll be, it'll be on-
And I just think we, I mean, I'm obvious that Mr. Dionne isn't talking, but I don't, don't, what I don't understand, there's no overall layout here, and I mean, we've got, this is one of the problems with, I can see with the form in my first meeting here. There's no overall layout as to what's happening.
That's how they're gonna be. So when they come in, they're all gonna be like this. We'll, we'll help you through that part.
But normally, when somebody presents something, they come and say that.
Well, we're not to that part yet.
We didn't get there yet.
That's next.
What do you mean, we're not to that part?
We're just, we're just talking about the out-of-cycle if we were willing to.
But voting on the out-of-cycle depends on what's gonna happen to the project.
Well.
And therefore, we need to know, just a quick overview.
Jim, we're on six.
Yeah, so we're just talking if we would consider doing an out-of-cycle funding.
Oh, I see. Okay, we're not talking about this-
No, we're not talking about-
This is seven.
We're talking about it generally right now, not specifically.
We're talking generally, well. Generally, I mean, generally doesn't, I thought we were talking about the particular housing project, which is what you talked about.
From my, my understanding of the out-of-cycle funding, it's for emergency responses. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we have in place right now.
So if you were to just say that there is a priority that you're giving another project, then just have them do the applications. If we want to do that in the future, then we can introduce a cycle of a, a funding source when a project comes up, maybe before the applications are approved. But the reality of it is, is that, that funding source, the out-of-cycle funding source, is for an emergency. And, and again, you're right, the, the, the library and the roof- and that could have been, uh, identified as maintenance or lack of maintenance, but that ultimately was an emergency, there were other ramifications associated without doing that work that would have brought more harm to that, that building. So, I, I would say that this cycle needs to stay as exactly what it, it mean, it's meant for, for an emergency. If something needed to be done, and you had the funds, that you would address that. Now, until this application process is done, then we can talk about if you wanna do more than one cycle of applications or funding in the future. But, uh, up, right, right now, it, it doesn't meet that criteria, so.
I don't know if it meets the criteria or not. I don't know what's gonna happen if we don't vote the money tonight. Will, will they lose the house? Will the house be sold to somebody else?
No, it'll just come back in September. Okay, so, we'll move on, we won't beat a dead horse, uh, it doesn't seem like this. There's no motion, no second, so.
I think there was a motion.
Yeah, there was a motion.
I was, a motion to deny, um, the, uh, the out-of-cycle funding.
And I'll second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote?
Uh, Michael Ferrish, yes?
I thought we weren't talking, wait a minute, I thought we weren't talking about specific projects.
We're not, we're talking about just general out-of-cycle funding.
Yeah.
So we'll never reply any?
No, 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 no.
No, I, I don't understand the motion.
This, this.
We're not changing the process right now, this is not about a specific project.
Fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
That's the motion.
Maybe we can say that.
I think I did.
Yep.
Well, I, I didn't hear it.
That, that's okay.
We'll get through it.
What is the motion?
The motion right now is to reject the out-of-cycle funding. That's it.
And keep in place our emergency funding
Yeah.
that we.
Okay.
You could say reject any non-emergency out-of-cycle funding for FY twenty-six, to be very more specific.
Okay. We're, we're going to reject any out-of-cycle funding that are not emergency-related until, or, or table it until after the applications, and then we'll address that process, it's just the process.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Sorry, just by that language, we couldn't start the process of changing the process until after the application period, which would be a year or so, generally.
Oh, is that okay?
Yeah, like, I, if you, if we wanna start before.
So the, is the September one, is that when the applications are supposed to be?
So that's, so, uh, this FY twenty-six funding cycle is about to start with the eligibility applications due at the beginning of September, and then I think Sandy has a schedule of what it currently is.
Okay.
Um, then, usually in October, the hearings are conducted, January fifteenth, around there, um, is when the funding, the full funding applications are due, so
Okay.
it's the full application.
Let's just stick to the.
Yeah, I, I, now I understand what you're saying, the timeframe.
Okay, so, we had roll call vote?
Uh, yes, from Michael Ferrish.
Alex?
Well, I, sorry, I would wanna change it, um, before the end of the year, so I, I would say no to that motion, sorry.
Now, I'm, now I'm confused.
So you, you're, you're basically.
We're not gonna have a funding round, is what he's saying, we have to talk about it and put it in.
Okay, so, I'm just going to do it for, um, I'm going to say, uh, the out-of-cycle funding is to be rejected and only used for emergency purposes, and at the
Until we.
until, until we readdress it, um, in the next calendar year.
Yeah, thank you, yep.
Okay, that I'll second.
Okay, now I understand.
Michael Ferris, yes?
Alex Silva, yes?
Kristen Cantara Oliveri, yes?
John, yes?
No.
Rick Mancini, yes?
All righty. Uh, let's see, um, okay. Uh, can I have a vote to approve the CPC coalition membership dues?
I'll make a motion to approve the CPC coalition dues.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that also.
Okay, roll, uh, roll call, hold on a minute.
Michael Ferrish, yes?
Alex Silva, yes?
Kristen Cantara Oliveri, yes?
John Brant, yes?
Yes.
Rick Mancini, yes?
Just, just one thing, do we need to just address number seven and say at this point, so we don't even need to discuss it?
We've addressed it.
No, not, not number seven specifically.
Applicant is left, and it's, it's done.
Yeah, since we didn't approve the out-of-cycle funding.
So we don't need to dis- okay, so we don't even need to acknowledge it, okay.
Then next we have eligibility funding round. So hold on to this package, 'cause we already have it before September first, so. This year with, uh, passing out, uh, our funds in July, I noticed a lot of the folks, uh, that had outside projects, uh, were getting their money, but the project's not gonna be started, because by the time, uh, they get the contractor and all that, winter sets in, so they don't get anything done. So what I wanted, was looking at doing, was bumping up, um, our procedure, our, our guidelines. Uh, we still keep the September first as eligibility date, um, the same as, uh, our old one. And, uh, then we start hearing, eligibility hearings conducted, uh, uh, starting in September sixteenth. And, um, I think we have the calendar there. Or do we not have a calendar?
No, it's in there.
It's, it's there.
September? Oh, this, September and January. Well, we'll be doing, uh, eligibility hearings, we'll, we'll do those in September, have them all done by October. Then we're gonna move up the, uh, funding application due by December. That gives everybody two months to get their final application in. Then we'd start hearing deliberation, um, in January. We'll conduct the funding hearings, or we'll deliberate January fourteenth. Uh, January we'll score, and then we'll send appropriations down to City Council in February. And, uh, what this'll do is get the money in the hands of folks that have the projects approved before summer starts. So if it's outside project, they can start, they have the money right away. I mean, it does require a little more attendance on our part, because normally we just meet once a month. Uh, we used to do it, in the old days, we used to do two, three times a month, uh, for, uh, funding and, uh, uh, eligibility hearings. So, I think if we speed, you know, not speed things up, but condense it and do more meetings, that, this way, if we're hearing everybody in January, it's fresh in our heads, uh, because we'll have the meetings right away. And, uh, when it comes time to voting for the projects, we'll have a, a little better memory and questions, and our opinions will be, you know, a little fresher. So, any discussion comments on that?
Uh, yeah, I, I would actually recommend, you know, typically the cycle for owning a, an engineering and design bill firm, uh, you know, you're typically designing in the winter, um, getting it awarded by January, and then, you know, sign contracts, January, February, March, so that they can start ordering their equipment and just like the materials, especially like with Antioch, uh, beforehand, and so the timeframe is usually the summertime that you're trying to target a start date. And so that would help a lot of these, any types of school projects, historical stuff, that when they're not in session. So, again, like in, in, in the case of Antioch School, they're actually going above and beyond, and they're actually doing construction while school is in session. So, that's kind of the cycle that I, I would tailor for, so I'm, I'm okay with moving those things up, so that, uh, one, it'll be a lot more competitive on bidding, 'cause that's where most contractors, they're doing the estimates and bidding, you know, uh, in the off-season, so design, and then they go out, get a contractor, bid, get the materials, and start construction right when the springtime starts, or, you know, it's, the weather starts to get a little bit open. So, if that would help, I think we would, I would be all for, uh, moving, uh, a schedule of that nature.
Yeah, I mean, that way, in February, they'd know if the project's passed, and they could start really getting the, the hard bits and everything squared away.
The other thing too, when we, normally where it would be January fifteenth, that the projects are due, um, over, like, from my experience, from what I remember, that time from like, December, somewhere around the beginning of December through January, nobody's doing anything because of the holidays, so even the people that are trying to get their stuff in, when they're, you know, late on things and that, they don't do it, so it's kind of a wasted time period. So it makes more sense to get it in before, like, by December second, that way, nobody's trying to chase stuff down at the holidays, and then nobody can have meetings, because while we can, and we, you know, so it, it does make more sense even just for that reason.
I mean, in two months, they should be able to finish the final.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll know, 'cause when, when we have eligibility hearings, if they pass eligibility, we tell them, "You will need a letter from this committee, this committee," and then it's up to them to get it within that timeframe, and if they don't, that's on them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, any other comments, or Alex?
No, just, I just wanted to say, I, I concur with the new, the new schedule, tightening this up, I think is, has a lot of advantages, has advantages even to us
Yeah.
in the way we're gonna have the, the information current.
Yep.
We're not gonna have a delay, it'll be, be good current information being utilized on a regular basis.
Plus, what do we really do in January?
I just wanted to say, I think this is a really good idea, it's very proactive, um, good job, John, for kinda coming up with this, and Sandy for kinda ironing out this new schedule. I think it's very receptive to what applicants, or what would be helpful for applicants. You know, we've heard a lot of feedback about timing for things and approval, and we're always trying to improve this process. Um, is it safe to assume this is for FY twenty-six, the next year, since all of these dates haven't been advertised for current?
Yes, um, and I checked with the city clerk, and these dates are the dates that this room should be available. So, I came up with these dates according to the other boards and commissions that already booked this room.
Hmm.
So, if you approve this tonight, I will go ahead and I will actually book these dates for the hearing. Yes, this would be for FY twenty-six.
Oh, we're gonna change this.
Oh, this is now, so we're not, so.
We have to change the, uh, due date for, uh, well, the hearing dates will be changed.
Yeah, so I, I didn't know if we wanted to do this a year af- like, I didn't know if we wanted to change it this current cycle, kinda how we were saying, 'cause anyone who would have been doing their research throughout the summer for this funding round, they have all the initial dates in their heads. Uh, it, maybe it's okay for us to ask them to, you know, move things up this early on, since it hasn't actually started yet?
I think so.
Um, if we can get that posted, like, you know, on our city website, and maybe.
As soon as we, okay, if we okay it tonight, we will do it.
Yeah, and, and if, if we could have, like, this schedule printed out as a sheet for when they come in for their eligibility hearings, so we can just give it to them too at that point, and let them know, and, you know, if anyone has any problems, perhaps we can, you know, be a little lenient in whatever ways we can.
But I concur, if we give the data to them on September first, when they turn in their, their information.
Right.
That should give them adequate
Yeah.
uh, knowledge and, 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 and get them to change their schedule appropriately. I, I see no problem with that, starting now.
Okay.
What I'll do is, I don't know if it'll work, but I'll send a press release to the newspaper.
Hmm.
Sandy, what did you say?
She said she, she doesn't know if.
I will send a press, I'll send a press release to the newspaper and hope that they publish it.
Yeah, and, and perhaps we can at least put it on our committee's webpage, like, at the, at the top, and then, I mean, even the ci- I mean, honestly, even the cities, the front webpage, they have a news section, so perhaps we can just ask them to post it as a news item, I think it is newsworthy and, and valuable public knowledge, so it could be kind of like, on that front page too.
Good point.
But yeah, uh, good, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Uh, so, can I have a motion to adopt the, uh?
I'll make a motion to adopt the new dates for eligibility and funding for FY twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, twenty-six, yeah, you're right.
I, I second that motion.
Roll caller.
Oh, go, uh, do we have a motion, a second?
Motion, second.
Motion, second.
Okay, roll call?
Michael Ferrish, yes?
Alex Silva, yes?
Kristen Cantara Oliveri, yes?
John Brant, yes?
Yes, James Hornsby.
Rick Mancini, yes?
Uh, project updates? I don't have any, uh.
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Sandy, any updates emailed to us, I don't think anybody?
No, actually, they, yeah, job, and, and representation is updated, and extension's pretty much updated, so.
Okay. Any, uh, new business? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Call favor?
Aye.
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 All righty.